I'm just saying. They'll play need in for a certain host.
Yeah. Okay, we talk. Alright, sure.
Shannon, Andy's gonna try.
Yeah.
Hey, chief.
How's your day?
I see you all set.
Good.
Okay.
Yeah, what'd your wife close on?
Uh, nineteen. So decided that they were gonna need my window. I walked and I found the fog. I dragged all the way in all my dirt everywhere. Wow. That was ridiculous. You know.
Bart, Mike.
Uh, Belichick pulled up this weekend. On Belichick. I don't think he's well.
He had a tough week here.
So did the kid at Ohio State.
And Archie Manning's kid who they kept saying is not, is gonna be drafted. He didn't look like that.
Alright, well said. Make sure. So.
Talking football up there? What do you think about Bill Belichick getting his, uh, panty spanked last night?
Not too used to that, but I tell you. Bunch of my friends were at that game.
Oh, really?
It's still so pretty. Teams. Went down. Is that the school talk here? They just want the hype. The listeners and the funny.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. It's all hype. It's not this year that matters. It's.
Right, and this is our meeting. I have a nephew that started playing college. His first one. Hundred thousand six days.
Hundred five thousand.
He said there was a lease. Seventy-five. Took him three and a half hours. It was like walking across school. Fifty-two thousand.
We got, got the app up to go. So much quicker coming up than that. Oh, my God, this thing is something better for this. Alright, let's call the regular schedule for select a meeting for Tuesday, September second. Uh, twenty twenty-five for order. First order business budget release.
Hi. Public debt. Just like you leave the just. Give the flag. And the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, yeah, I remember two public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Uh, in the room, none, I see, and on Zoom, anyone? I don't think so. They look like mostly employees or, uh, commissioning members. Item three, probable minutes, three dot one will be August eleventh, uh, special meeting. Is there a motion? Oh, a second, second. Uh, comments, questions, uh, changes, et cetera?
Yeah, it was the, the attendance section. Some attention.
Okay, who else was there? It's only two of you there, right?
Well, members, Sandra O'Freddie is not a member of our board. And I, I, I wasn't here myself, but I don't think you were, you weren't here by yourself that day. Um, and there's a mention that Sandy seconded the motion, so she must have been here. Oh, that's what it is. Sandra Wu off the show. That's it, yeah. But he.
Um, yes.
But just not, not really important to the content, but I think under absent, and this is for the other things as well. The absent members would just be members of our.
Our board, yeah, you're right. So let's, uh, let's, let's break that, so. Um. Here. Um, I'm gonna suggest that I think Vicki took the minutes for the first time. Uh, she's, isn't that?
It's a lot. Yeah.
All right, uh, with those correct, is there a motion to take those changes? It's.
I'll take that as a motion on second.
I was asked.
No, I'll, I'll make the motion to make those changes, Charles.
Thank you.
Second. All right, and, uh, nothing further. Let me try your minds. All in favor? Aye. Charles, are you a lie on it?
Yes.
Okay, Sandy, by the way, is, uh, was having. She's having a hard time watching it, so she's probably not gonna be able to make it. Uh. I'm standing as well. That motion carries. The August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes, uh, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Um, okay, I'm gonna make one correction, uh. Hey, no, no, okay, that's all right. That works. Um. Any, anybody else with anything on there?
Under, well, the same comment about the attendance, and under five point one, there's no content. Some pitch four.
Yeah. All right, why don't we, uh, why don't we table these until we have an opportunity to have Vicki and Karen take another look at them? That makes sense. Motion table?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Try your minds all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Um, okay, uh, item four, public works, Dave Castro. Eight, well, uh, four dot one, discuss to take possible action to reward chip and fog ceiling, uh, of sections. Long Hill Road. Asphalt, about one hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars per state contract.
Good morning. Um, so, yes, we're gonna focus our efforts on Long Hill this year. As far as, uh, chip, there's the small sections that we will be, uh, doing some overlay on. I know engineering has some bigger work. Down the road for that road, but that's years out, so we need to do something right now to, uh, you know, keep the, keep the road passable. Um, so, the, uh, amount that we had asked for, the one hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars, um, just so that it's noted, we actually. Would be paying one hundred fifty-eight thousand if we weren't sweeping it ourselves. We actually saved the town six thousand nine hundred and nine dollars and forty-four cents by sweeping it ourselves. Uh. And that, that is a two-step process where we, where they will chip it and then they'll fog the top of it, and we will be, uh, detouring, uh, cars, uh. Vehicles, uh, during certain times, but they don't have us on the schedule yet, so when we find out, we will put it on Facebook and, uh, notify everybody. Of, uh.
What the shit. Fogging, what do you mean, fog the top?
So, so, chip is they put down the oil, then they put down the stone. Well, the fog is that oil goes back on top of the stone too, and what it does is it locks the stone in, so you get substantially less stone. Uh, going all over the grass and everything else, it, it holds it in better.
Wow, okay.
I miss your questions. Dave, thanks once again for, uh, your diligence in terms of saving money, uh. The, uh, seven thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars. Thank you, so thank you. Uh, nothing further. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Save that because I signed that contract. Right. Four dot two, discuss to take, uh, action to approve the purchase of a three-point hitch blower.
Yeah, so, uh, what a lot of towns do and, uh, is on the back of their mowers, when they mow, there's a lot of grass that gets into the road. So this is a blower that actually attaches to the back of the mower, and it blows the grass back into the grass. It has, um, the head is adjustable. They can, they can swivel the head in different directions. Uh, but what we're finding is that'll help us too, because we mow a section of town, hey, send the sweeper down to come get this grass. Now we can just blow it off into the grass. Um, and it's not, uh, something like what Parks and Rec has where, you know, you can blow. You know, across the green, you know what I mean? Something like that, but it's a, it's a smaller blower, but it, that's what it does, um. We went out and we looked for, we contacted vendors on state contract and, um. We have four different quotes from, from four vendors on state current contract, going from ten thousand five hundred. To the seven thousand two hundred and nine dollars that you see in front of you, so that's what we're going with. And we're getting aggressive now when we hear, okay, well, you're on contract for source of our state, let's, let's see. And we call all our vendors now, um, find out what's the best price for the town.
Questions, comments? All right, uh, is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Um, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. All right, thank you. Dave, I did notice that, uh. We're looking for. Westmore the forklift through Capital points, uh, but on the memo that you sent to Karen on this August seventh.
Yes.
Take care of that at the. We did. I thought.
I did.
Anything I noted, you said these were off state contract. I noticed this is an out of state vendor.
It is. Uh, it's not common. It's not common at all, and, and usually we go through Batchard, who, who was in Swinser, I believe it is. And they're usually cheaper, but this time they weren't. They couldn't, they couldn't match the price, so.
Well, those things happen sometimes. Deal with that, make sure, whatever, it's just. Interesting state bid, uh, they.
Yeah, I think, uh, largely because the amount of federal funding we get, we can't, the state of Connecticut cannot limit, uh, bids. They go out to bid their product. In their, in their bid documents, they usually state, will you or will you not extend this to other governmental agencies? Uh, sub, sub-agencies of the state. So that's, that's why, uh, most of these, uh, most of the state bids that go out themselves, they have that provision in it, uh, or question. Most of the vendors, that when they respond to a bid, say yes, because it means the possibility of additional business without having to submit, uh, uh, formal proposals or fees, et cetera, which comes.
Right. I'm assuming they're.
And they post about.
Assuming they're prepared to take care of any warranty work and delivery and stuff like that.
So the salesman.
That far away.
The salesman lives down here in the shore, and he does a lot of business down here, so he's, he's always available. And then, um, there are mowers, are, are tractors now? The vendor that's on state contract, that's the cheapest, is out of New Jersey. So it's something down the road when you parse. But.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Item five, police department. Well, it says chief, I don't see what you.
Send me in.
So, how are you this morning?
How are you?
Got your backup over there?
Yeah, we're swapping roles, so Tim's actually gonna be taking over support services on Monday the eighth. They're taking over professional standard stuff. Feel like we'd be seeing him more than me. Uh, so we, uh, if you remember a couple of weeks ago, we made the request to purchase the Ford F two fifty to replace our, uh, two thousand six Ford F two fifty. Um, so this is the request to have it outfit, uh, it's through Soli Garage in West Haven, who we've been using for about fourteen years now. Um, we went pretty heavy on the, uh, emergency lighting equipment for this, only because of the typical scenarios in which it's used, major incidents, uh, major accidents, et cetera. Um, so we are asking for approval to, uh, have the Ford F two fifty outfit by Soli Garage for seventeen thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars, fifty cents.
Gotta get that fifty cents.
Yeah, good.
Uh, is there a motion? Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, comments or questions? Pretty standard, so see. Know what's going on. Every time we buy a vehicle, for you guys.
Yeah.
It's an uplift, so.
Is that in the full-blown electronics that a cruiser had?
It will not, um, as far as the radio and the light and siren package, similar, uh. It's gonna have the, the spotlight similar to what we have on the cruisers, um, no laptop though. Uh, if we, if we outfit it as a frontline vehicle, we have to do the cameras, we have to do a bunch of other things that really don't.
Just when you said, you know, major action type thing, that.
Yeah. As far as lighting, it'll probably be more significant than the cruisers. Um, yeah, because.
Major, it's gonna have ten cruisers there anyway.
Right, correct, yeah. Um, but we, we like that to be well lit, just because typically we're using it to unload cones, et cetera, by subtracting patterns, so. Want to be pretty busy.
Alright, um, great minds, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.
I'm with Sandy Kamen. Hey, Sandy, welcome.
Hello.
Hello, Sandy.
Hello.
Item six, fire department. Steve Choe.
Morning.
Morning, sir. How are you? Uh, six dot one, this is, this person take action to approve a fire department capital expenditure from a sole source vendor for the fire department dive. Floor is yours.
Alright, thank you. Um, so this purchase is, uh, in capital, uh, equipment. It's for technical rescue dive services, so, um. Throughout our tech rescue programs, uh, we stay on a ten-year, um, ten-year schedule to, for replacement of, uh, life safety equipment. And the dive team, uh, needs a, basically, uh, some, um, a bunch of the regulators, the, uh, B C's, B C devices are all at end of service, so they're active ten years. So we're basically replacing existing stock and, and falling off after a ten-year mark for replacement.
Um, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And approve this? Second. Any, uh, comments, questions?
Just a quick one, not really about your request, but I did look, because the name is unusual, I looked it up on the Secretary of State website, and they're delinquent with their annual report filings. And they're allowed to be dissolved, so going to the question asked previously about somebody standing behind the product, maybe we should make sure that they take care of that.
So most, that this vendor is our, our, our vendor for this direct equipment and this type of equipment, um, but we will follow up with that and check on that. Thank you, because we do have lawsuits repaired there as well, so. Thank you.
Do you think this is what?
So you create some legal word for some firm from our state.
Put themselves, it takes five minutes to annual report filing with the Secretary of State, so.
Minor payment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The website, so they're gonna be dissolved in like mid-September if they don't take care of it, so.
I will follow.
And they may have already taken it, so I apologize for.
Yeah, that's good.
Taking your name.
Thank you.
Um, let me try my, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Aye. Aye.
All right, uh, item seven, discuss and take actions with disposal of a twelve-year-old laser jet printer.
Yeah.
Uh, I think you see, uh, the detail, uh, Tony Santacranzolo is not here today. Um, but this is something that we're no longer using, and gonna try to dispose of it through the bidding process, the electronic bidding part. So is there a motion to approve?
Motion?
Second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Talk about. For the piece, what man's, uh, treasure is another man's, uh, trash, is another man's story? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I like that motion carries.
Aye.
Uh, Park and Rick, uh, Pam Gary, Pam, are you on?
Let's see, assuming that phone number is Sandy.
Ah, it's Sandy.
Sandy.
It is Sandy, okay. Um.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it is pretty straightforward, uh. So for the viewing audience, in case you're interested, um, this is related to the Porch Fest, uh, activities, uh, sign on the green during the week, uh, to promote the Porch Fest, which will take up later. And then permission out of food truck on the green during the final, uh, Sunday night concert, uh, September seventh. Uh, is there a motion to approve? Oh, uh, second?
Second.
Um, before we move on, uh, we are trying to work, we are working, trying to, we are working with Guilford Little League. Uh, to recognize the girls softball team that went to the national tournament.
Fantastic.
Um, uh, up on the stage, uh, at that, at that event. Um, we think that that may have the opportunity to get the widest audience, uh, for that kind of celebration, so.
At the concert?
At the concert, at the concert on Sunday night. Let's hope that there's no rain, so we can actually do it. But, uh, as a longtime softball coach, uh, I do have to ask a question. Did you coach any of those kids in special stuff?
No, not, not in Guilford. No, no. High school, high school.
Well, you were also doing lessons for a long time.
I still am.
Aye.
All right, uh, is there, there's, there is a motion to approve. Uh, let me try your minds all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, item nine, appointments and resignations. Are you ready? Uh, okay. Nine dot one, discuss and take action to appoint Robert Dees as a regular member of the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission. I'd like to make that motion. Second.
Second?
Yeah, uh, let me try your minds all in favor?
Aye.
Nine dot two, discuss and take action to appoint Kathy Crossy to the Human Rights Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. I'd like to make that motion with their second.
I'll second.
Right, let me try your minds all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Nine dot three, uh, discuss and take action to appoint Amanda Pierce to the Harbor Management Commission to replace a term limited position, term to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Is there?
There's another one out. Maybe second.
Uh, let me try your minds? All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item four, uh, discuss and take action to appoint Amanda Pierce to the Marina Commission to fill an alternate vacancy, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. Is there a motion?
So.
Uh, second.
Second.
Oh, I see, okay. Oh, Marina at Harbor, okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
There's some synergy there, huh?
Tell them, huh?
Uh, let me try your minds all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Nine dot five, discuss and take action to appoint Walt Sizemore to the Youth and Family Services Board to fill a vacancy for a term to expire September thirtieth, twenty-six. Um, is there a motion? I'll make that motion. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Back in.
Let me try your minds all in favor? Uh, discuss.
Aye.
That motion carries. Discuss and take, uh, nine dot six, discuss and take action to appoint Walt Sizemore to the Waste Transfer Station Advisory Committee to fill a vacancy for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
So.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
Right, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry. Um, nine dot seven, discuss and take action to reappoint Dennis Cornelli to the Fire Commission for a term to expire on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-nine. I'd like to make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, 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 let me try your minds all in favor?
Aye.
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 Nine dot eight, discuss and take action to move Ben Robinson from alternate to regular member of the Economic Development Commission for a term to expire on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Uh, is there a motion?
So.
Sandy? Sandy?
Yeah.
And second? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, discuss and take action to move Vicki Gersten from alternate to regular member of the Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion? I'll make that motion.
A second.
Second, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, nine dot ten, discuss and take action to amend the appointment of Matthew Raider to an alternate on the Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Oh, move.
Second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Nine, uh, nine dot eleven, discuss and take action, uh, to accept the resignation of Don Callahan as a business liaison to the Youth and Family Services Board. Is there a motion with appreciation and regret?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss and take action to appoint Sarah St. Dennis from Ascend Bank as the business liaison to Youth and Family Services. Uh, is there a motion? Charles?
I'll move.
Sarah St. Dennis? Former board member? Uh, or chair, actually. Um, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry. Nine dot one three, discuss and take action to accept the resignation of Jerry Reisman from the Youth and Family Services Board. Is there a motion?
So.
And a second with, uh, regret and appreciation.
Is there some special going on at Youth and Services? There's no really changes or just?
Yeah, I just think people are, you know.
Yeah.
And, uh. But I, 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 maybe, maybe I should talk to Lynn and find out what she's doing. She run off the board.
Well, I'll say both, both the resignation letters speak very highly of the program. One refers to it as a gem, um, you know, the other says similar things, so.
Yeah.
No issues.
No issues. Let me try your minds all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, that motion carries. Nine dot one four, discuss and take action to move Scott Jackson from alternate to regular member of the Youth and Family Services Board for a term to expire on, uh, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Um. Try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, nine dot one five, discuss and take action on resignation of, uh, Patrick Paioletti from his only Board of Appeals. Is there a motion?
Make the motion with appreciation or regret?
Yeah. You know, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nine dot one six, discuss and take action to appoint Roger Joyce to the Police Commission for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. I'd like to make that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
I know you would as well. But with Co, Co, Co first. Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, uh, request for use of town property. Uh, discuss and take action on a request from the Cove Center for breathing children to place a sign on the green advertising, advertising in front for the Cove, sign placement would be October three, eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, it's, uh, ten dot two, discuss and take action on a request from Christ Episcopal Church to place a sign on the green advertising its community's celebration and cookout taking place September thirteenth. Signing placement, uh, October two to thirteen. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second, right, uh, any comments or questions? I think there was a little, hmm.
Yeah, I haven't heard of the event. I don't know if it's a first time.
Yeah.
I think they tie it in with like a, an auction as well.
Nice.
All right, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Ten dot three, discuss and take action on a request from the Friends of the Library to place a sign on the green advertising its fall sales, September twenty-sixth, it's, uh, twenty-eighth, sign placement, September twelfth through the twenty-eighth. Say anything, is that you?
So, so moved.
Second. That's always a sign that the end of the year is near.
Yes, that's right.
Uh, let me try your minds all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Ten dot four, discuss and take action, uh, on a request from the New Comes Club to place a sign on the green advertising its, uh, sign. Advertising, this kickoff event on September twenty-sixth, um, signing placements, September twelfth through the twenty-sixth. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Uh, just, uh, for note, I have attended those, uh, kickoff, uh, or those annual, uh, and, these are annual meetings for people. And, uh, they usually have them up at, um, Dudley Farm in the barn. They do a really nice job, and I get an invite usually every year, so. I think, I think it's on my calendar. And I actually think we've gotten, uh, a number of people, uh, joining, uh, or trying to get on Porsche commissions from that group.
Great.
Was that when I talked to, when I make my pitch, I talk about how volunteers are so important in this community, plus it's a great way to get to know new people. But we've had some success with that. Ten dot five, discuss and take action to approve a green use request from Allos Inc. Is there a motion?
Make motion?
And a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries again. Uh, ten dot six, discuss and take action to approve the use of the green, uh, by, uh, Guilford Little League for a celebratory event. This is, this is a backup to what we're trying to do, so. In case they want to do something, uh, smaller and more intimate with their organization.
Their dates on the, um, form have passed.
Passed, yeah, so, uh, but, uh, we're looking forward in advance.
Yeah.
So they can, they can, if they need to quickly turn something around. It's, uh, all right, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very. Ready reports, uh, Sandy, uh. Or. Or Christine, uh. Affordable housing?
No updates, just here to pay attention.
Thank, thank you for joining us.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, correspondence? Um. Ball that one, uh, resident, uh, with elderly tax relief executive session may be required, so, um.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there a motion to add, uh, uh, add that to executive session in addition to what we already have on, uh, item sixteen?
So moved.
We got it. Um, ball that two, discuss and take possible action on correspondence regarding request for manufacturing, uh, and machinery and equipment exemption, executive session may be required for that as well, um. I don't know if Becky's.[1732.26]
Hey, good morning.
Let's, yeah, why don't you come on up and let's talk about it. Um, in the nature of what you're going to disclose, you think an executive session is, is required at this point, because this is affecting a very specific business, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I don't think the information we, we intend to share this morning on the request is uh, you know, privileged or proprietary.
That's good, okay, uh, Brook and Will, one of our larger, uh, larger taxpayers in town, um, and the challenge with one of the findings for the exemption from machinery, from manufacturing machinery, uh, and the, uh, there is a process that's defined state statutes that allows for them to appeal and file late uh, and then allow for, uh, this board to grant the exemption of the tax, taxes issued on manufacturer equipment, so. Gentlemen, please introduce yourselves, I think we've met before one time, um.
Yes.
And here's Becky.
Perfect time, come on, you can join us at the table.
The fire chief stopped me in the hall.
Uh, good morning and thank you, I'm David Hardy, um, I'm an attorney with Carbondy Torrance and Sand that can head a seat. And I represent Brooklyn Whittle on joint territory by John McManus, who's the director of operation, uh, compliance and regulatory company. Um, so yeah, your summary of our request was well stated. Um, we are requesting that the board, uh, exercise its authority under the statute to allow the late filing of the exemption claim. Um, Brooklyn Whittle is located at twenty, uh, Harder Drive, which is just north of the on-ramp to Interstate ninety five south at Goose Lane. Um, they are a leader in innovative labeling and packaging, uh, and they employ two hundred and sixty people, uh, out of the facility here in Guilford. Their, their headquarters is located here and obviously, uh, their presence supplies important economic, uh, direct benefits to Guilford uh, in the community, this is the equipment for which Brooklyn Whittle has, um, qualified for exemption for many, many years, uh, this past year, due oversight, they did not file the exemption claim on a timely basis. The, uh, the financial ramifications of the exemption not being extended are, um, stark. Uh, it would effectively bring the tax bill on the personal property from about fifty-six thousand dollars to just over three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And thankfully, the statute is in place, there's a recognition by the legislature that, um, these sorts of impacts can be, uh, significant and present a hardship to manufacturing companies, and so we're requesting that the board exercise its authority under the statute to, uh, provide this importantly.
Thank you, Becky, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to add or?
I thought we did, I thought we took pretty much.
Um, Becky, Pete and I worked on this and actually it was pretty interesting, we were starting a conversation after they had requested consideration or to meet with us, actually. Um, and Pete, uh, put together a document through, uh, after having the conversation with Becky, because Becky identified that state statute. And ironically, um, you were about to suggest the same thing to Pete, uh, as, as part, as, as part of our meeting, um, so. Becky, anything else you want to add at this point?
Um, just, I'm not sure, I just have this for the board, just for your consideration, but just according to the statute, um, just what you could, if you're allowed to consider. Since this, this is the first time, I believe, that the board has, has dealt with this.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, it's happened. Because it's, it's, uh, you know, demonstrating the hardship, um, you know, what, what are your criteria? So, so that's just a recommendation.
So hardship doesn't refer to the hardship that you experienced by having a big tax bill, the hardship that we're, I think we need to look at is what hardship prevented the filing from being correct?
Yeah, and we, and we laid out in our, uh, written request, the circumstances of the, um, the oversight in this particular case, because of the scrolling, um, there was, uh, turnover in the position responsible for making the annual filing. And, uh, and that's why it didn't get made this year, uh, and the statute does, um, does identify certain criteria that, that may be considered, um, which also include the, you know, economic benefits of town, but it's not limited in terms of the, uh, criteria that the board select one can, um, consider enacting in what are the best interests of the town.
So going back to the hardship, um, there's the employee prepares the form, and my understanding based on the letter was that there was turnover and it was a mistake. But a corporate officer then signs the form, isn't that how it works?
Yeah, that's correct, I, I don't believe that a corporate officer has to sign the form, but that in, in this particular case.
For corporation, it does have to be, so I'm just wondering if that's, if that would have been the same person who signed it in all these past years.
Oh, in terms of.
And should have noticed that the exemption wasn't there.
Yeah, that, that I actually don't know whether it was, um, Mr. Barton who had signed the exemption claim form in the year, uh, preceding twenty twenty four.
The exemption claim form was in effect for a number of years before?
Yes.
Same.
Yes, but it has to be filed every year.
So if it was filed on time, how does this work with the grand list, if it was filed on time, it would have been factored into the grand list?
It gets applied to the, the account, yes.
But.
And reports at the state.
Okay, and, and I mean, I'm oversimplifying, but everybody else's taxes go up a tiny bit to make up for it, and we, and we, and the town sends tax bills that are the amount necessary for us to cover our budget.
Essentially, yes.
But with it happening so late, does that put us in a deficit?
I, I don't believe so, because Mary Jane typically does the exemptions.
I have notified our director of finance, so. But yes, it's a, it's an adjustment. So that's, that was the concern when there was a lack of filing. So, you know, we made efforts to contact the company, because it was such a huge, it's gonna, it was gonna create this problem, but there was nobody, we couldn't get anybody on the phone, so. Um, and, and again, you know, we can't, we, we can do just so much to.
Well, if you tried to contact him and the contact wasn't made, how was it called when you have tax bill?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Stay for me, yeah, no question about it, and I, I think they've admitted that, fallen on their sword on this one, um. You know, that, that, uh, that, that process is one that requires an annual filing. Uh, there should be some corporate, uh, record that that needs to be done at some, at some point, um. You know, uh, it's not unusual for things to fall through the cracks once in a while, something that's significant, I think, uh, is, is serious.
Yeah, certainly, and certainly a mistake that won't be repeated again, uh, but, but, but I would say that the consequences quite substantial.
Quite substantial.
On, on property that, that is exempted from statutes, but just was not claimed on time.
And that is, as you said, it is a state statute, a state provision on, uh, manufacturing machinery, which is for economic development purposes, and to, and to keep manufacturing here, uh, in Connecticut, uh, and quite honestly, it's a little unusual. There are only a handful of, uh, manufacturing facilities in town, one of them was adjacent to you guys, um, in La Rosa, right? Um, so you guys are largely the industrial, manufacturing industrial center for Guilford, so. And as you mentioned, there's two hundred and fifty jobs, so. And not that those jobs would be a jeopardy, but sure. Additional than three hundred thousand dollars is pretty significant for your audience.
Yeah, that's correct, and, and the statute really does, the savings clause really does. It's, it's specific to manufacturing, it's a real recognition by the legislature about policy in the states to help manufacturers.
Yeah, and you know, take a look at the intent of, uh, the legislation, right, when they put a provision in there that said, oh, these things may happen in the future, there is a process for them to be addressed. Uh, and so the intent of, uh, the, the legislation was to provide that kind of backstop in the event that something happened.
I'm assuming that this is a first for this company.
Um, I believe um, since two thousand seventeen, they've been filing on time.
Okay. Well, all of those considerations. I, I, I guess they it's gotta be fixed in a few months, but.
Does not affect our tax revenues.
It does, it does.
It's, it's out of our bottom line, so to speak.
I mean, it's out of, um, what the budget was projected as.
Um, MJ? And I see you're, you're monitoring this? Mary Jane? Here we go. Uh, she's on.
I just had to get to the right buttons.
There you go, there you go, uh, just wanted, we're just confirming that your, uh, estimations for exemptions on tax did not include, uh, this, uh, this one, uh, the Brook and Will?
No, not specifically, it did not.
Okay, so do you address them on a case by case basis when you put together your exemption list?
Uh, I don't take into consideration late filings of personal, uh, you know, of this sort, it's not one of the adjustments that I do when we're putting together a mill rate.
Right, so you did not include this, uh, this, this tax bill, uh, or this assessment, uh, because it's really, it's really a reduction in the assessment, uh, which affects, which is, affects the tax bill.
Correct, we take a general, um, exemption for changes to the grand list based on prior years. Um, so you could say that it's potentially part of that, but specifically these types, this type of exemption or change is not in our calculation.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First name?
I think I'm opposed to it.
Okay, thank you. All right, that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, item twelve dot three, correspondence from, uh, a resident regards a town marina, anybody have a comment or? Sorry, which one, no? Pat Todd was here to make that.
I was not.
Yeah, the, the, the same comments, right.
So she wrote his letter after.
After the fact, that's right.
Making additional point about.
So I have not had an opportunity to get together with the Marina Commission and/or, um, the, uh, and, and/or Guard Club or, um, Dave Castro's organization, uh, for what can be done with those, uh, those islands. Uh, like, for those, those who have seen the island on Whitfield Street, uh, between Whitfield and Old Whitfield, they did a great job with that one, so. Yeah. So, assuming that, uh, there'll be a budget for plants, et cetera, we can, uh, move forward, at least with the islands down there, that would be our, uh, so. All right, um, old business? New business? Public farm? Hearing none, uh, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Some.
Second. Second. Uh, let me try your minds on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, why don't we go, Ken, why don't we take you first and then we'll, um, we'll take your issue second? Uh, this is a contractual lineup, so if you wouldn't mind just sitting in the chair right outside the, uh, room. Because executive session, uh, uh, in this, that creates privacy.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good, how about you? Much better. Much better, I fought COVID for two and a half weeks.
Amen.
And I'm feeling much better, thank you for asking, um. Uh, I think in your package, you received a copy of the draft.
Well, you're not. What, what?
The draft employment contract of Michael Shove is the fire chief, fire marshal of the Guilford Fire Department. Um, as you know, on July first, at the Board of Fire Commissioner meeting, the board appointed Mike as the fire marshal, fire chief of the Guilford Fire Department. Um, one of the things that was, um, discussed and, and was part of the, um, the motion was that the chairman negotiated a contract in conjunction with the approval and, and input of the first selection. Um, I will tell you that Mike did not have a lawyer. Um, we did, the two of us, uh, a kind of, excuse me, Matt.
Paula? Oh, yeah, well, um. They don't have anybody, sorry. Paula, uh, please drop off, registrar, please drop off. There you go, I think that's it for everybody.
Yeah, so.
Sandy's still here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Did we record any of this, Mike? Yeah.
I was, I don't know if that red means not recording, is that?
Uh.
Those recording up there, right?
I think that means don't.
She tells Sam to stop recording?
No.
Yeah, tell Sam to stop.
Is her phone here, by the way, I think she left it.
Uh.
How about dressing too many?
Everybody's got a phone.
Seventy-five things on the table between the platters and the phones.
My God.
Technology adds faster work.
Yeah, one of those.
They don't know how to use any of them. Don't know how to use any. Waiting for, just to make sure, yeah.
It's blinking. I think she might have it.
She can't do this, because you'd have flew from here, because she's not on it. It's easy if you end the meeting, but then you lose Sandy.
I'm here.
Uh, Sandy, why don't you call, yeah. Call into some, yeah, we'll put you on speakerphone.
Call me on my phone, Sandy.
I can't call in because I'm using my phone and I'm afraid I'll lose you if I do that.
No, that's. We, we, we're gonna drop the call. We're gonna drop the Zoom call because we don't have anybody controlling the, uh, recording.
Okay, so then I, I, I won't be in the meeting anymore?
Yeah, you're gonna call.
You're gonna call Lou on his cell phone. Call her.
Okay, all right, bye-bye.
Bye, fast approach.
I take that word down.
No. Yeah. Hi, Sandy.
Hello.
Yeah, that's better. Okay, let me, uh, end the meeting.